We'll call on you.
Your dad said yes.
So at this time, welcome to our October meeting and our October pumpkin season and pumpkin traffic. I apologize, but I'm not totally responsible for it all because everyone loves coming to the coast. And sometime come by the farm and you will see a world map of how many visitors are coming down Highway One. It is just absolutely amazing. And my first visitor, very fascinating, was a couple from New Zealand. And, okay, very nice, exciting, but they were from Stewart Island, and my geography's not that good. And Stewart Island is about an hour and a half ferry ride. They're eight generations over there. And... Who did? I have no idea what you're talking about, sir. Okay, we'll continue with the meeting. You've got to dry off. Okay. Okay, so we'll, all right, go easy here. I'm sorry, I did not see it happen. Okay, then we'll let them visit, who knows. Okay. So anyhow, as I was saying, they were from Stewart Island, population of 400. He's eight generations of running a ferry boat, and they're from Half Moon Bay. And so that was my story. So, Half Moon Bay, New Zealand. Yep. So we will go ahead now and ask for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Oh, I'm sorry, roll call first. Yeah.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here, we're present. My scout, come. Thank you. May we have your name, sir?
Wilbur.
Wilbur?
Wilburkey.
I'm sorry, Wilburkey, I apologize. So at this time, we, I have the privilege to recognize an individual who's worked very hard for us here in the city over the incident this past summer at Moon Ridge, and he's done a wonderful job. And so I personally want to recognize Dirk Avrato. And part of that, I will be presenting him with a check to Sunrisus, which he's very involved with. And it's a personal contribution I'm making of $800 to Dirk at Sunrisus. So I'll bring it forward to him.
Oh, wow, thanks, John.
So on behalf of all of us, Dirk, really, I cannot thank you enough for all the hard work you put in along with other individuals to continue to work through this issue that we unfortunately had. So I'd like to just give you a check to Sunrisus in your honor from me personally.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, John. Thank you. There were some pretty, there was a tragic event in June that really shook, I think, the entire community. And there were a lot of things that needed to be done to bring the best results possible from it moving forward. And there's no bringing back anyone, and it was a tragedy. But working with you, John, and the City Council, as well as the Sheriff's Department and Mid Peninsula Housing, as well as some other organizations and community people, we were able to put together a series of meetings that allowed the community to come together and talk about the tragedy that happened. And they happened up at Moon Ridge, and then there were parallel meetings here in Half Moon Bay. And it took a lot of support, and there were a lot of hours of meeting and preparation. But I really do appreciate the leadership, and I know that the people that were involved really appreciated the leadership of you, John, showing up. And Sunrisus will really appreciate this. And for those that don't know me, I'm the Executive Director of Sunrisus, and we're a small nonprofit dental clinic here in Half Moon Bay. And we provide dental services for those that are unable to afford dental services anywhere else. And so it's for children all the way through seniors. And a large part of the way that we're able to operate is by having individual donations like this. So, John, this will go a long ways, and we really appreciate it. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. So, excuse me. So at this time, we will have Mayor's announcements, and I think probably the biggest one will be Monday, is the way off here in Half Moon Bay. And there's some very big pumpkins coming to town. I know we have some issues with the Usiggi Farms and things like that over in Gilroy. But Half Moon Bay is still going to be recognized with some big ones from Sonoma, Santa Rosa, and Petaluma, that area there. So, yep. Pardon me. Yeah. Would it work better, officers, would it work better if we asked the comments to be taken outside? Sergeant? Thank you. Appreciate that. And so at this time, any other announcements and community activities, Council?
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, once a month, Dirk holds or hosts a co-side collaborative in the Emergency Operations Center, and he brings together the Sal, the Friends of the Library, the Red Cross. I mean, there's a host of people that come there. And it's amazing what we learn that's going on on the coast. And I think it's really a huge benefit to us. Maybe after the first of the year, I would like to see if we couldn't possibly maybe pay for a website called like HMB Kids, and everything that's happening on the coast would get posted there so that people could find out all the great things that are going on. The library, when she reported, they had like 10 different events happening. It's amazing the things that are going on that I'm afraid a lot of people don't know. So I want to thank Dirk for his hosting co-side collaborative. It's really a really nice place to go once a month.
Thank you for that. Any other comments regarding upcoming events, anyone knows of? It's a busy pumpkin time for everyone. So at this time, City Attorney, I don't believe we have a report out of closed session with comment?
Nothing to report.
City Council reports, start with Councilmember Alafano.
Been pretty busy. I'll go through them quickly. We had a LAVCO meeting, and obviously, one of the key things we're talking about right now is the upcoming municipal service review for the Harbor District. That'll be happening probably in the next few months. The Chamber had a mixer down at the Harbor at OPL and Seville. They had a great turnout, and it's really interesting to go to the different things around the coast. OPL has really changed from what it used to be. It was very interesting. The Surf Club had a luau right here. We had a SAM meeting. The Council of Cities Dinner was in Pacifica, and I'd never been to that restaurant before. I think it's called Port 27. And it was really an interesting and eye-opener to go to that dinner. And they talked about the training for people that are trying to handle individuals that have mental issues and so forth. County's putting a lot of effort into this. Went to the Hus Dinner that they did at La Nebia. That was really a nice dinner that Charisse put together, farm-to-table concept. I think we had the biggest ribbon cutting in my history in five years for Keller Williams, the new building right at the corner of Main and 92. I think the City Manager, and I think Alex was there, I saw them. And they had a huge crowd. You could hear the music from about a block away. It's really nice to see these new businesses opening up in town with a lot of enthusiasm and probably hiring people, too. And then, like I mentioned, we had a co-side collaborative meeting, and Don Horstley was the main speaker. He talked about what he's doing with the coast. It's now his district. And we got to ask him a lot of questions, but a really interesting meeting every month.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I attended the same dinner that Councilmember Alafano did, and it was the mental health issues. But one of the big takeaways from that was that the county is changing the way that they can respond to people. Part of that is in light of the tragedy that we had earlier this year with the young girl being shot. Pacifica had a similar situation. And so now they've developed a script. So when families do call, when they're in a situation where they're asking for police assistance, they're able to identify that the person they're calling about has mental health issues. That's one of the ways that they're starting to look at, as well as training officers to understand a situation when it happens, when you do have people that have their challenges with mental health. And you will be hearing more about it. I think the county is going to come over here and talk about it, but they are reaching out to families who do have loved ones that are in these situations. And this past Saturday at the library was filled with activities, from children's programming to, we did have the display of the library. But also Stanford came over and gave free flu shots, about 150 that are supplied, and they're going around to the libraries and distributing that in the coast side. So it was really well-attended from all age groups, as well as the adoption of cats and dogs. And there was a salsa tasting, so a lot more than books going on that day. But one of the most exciting things I was at in the last week was I had spent the day in Palo Alto at a Silicon Valley Bike Summit, which was absolutely fascinating. I am a member of the Coalition. And what they're able to provide us with is more resources and grants to continue our trails in bike and pedestrian ways, and to make it safer for both cars and pedestrians and cyclists to get around town. They're really concentrating on infrastructure and how to put that in as you're planning your communities. They offer bike safety workshops. So we're in touch with them, and we could do something next year with that. So it was, for a whole-day program, it was, it was really, it was great. Those people from Santa Clara were there, as well as San Mateo County, because that's, the Coalition serves us all. So you'll be hearing more about that in the future.
Thank you. Councilmember Patrick?
Yes. I also attended the Council of Cities in Pacifica, and it was very, very informative. And I was happy to see that San Mateo County mental health and all the services that they do have that we didn't know about. So it was very enlightening to hear all that they do have. I attended the Transportation Authority Strategic Subcommittee meeting, and we received an update that was going to be presented to the Authority Board meeting. Attended congestion management, environmental quality committee, received a presentation and update on San Mateo County energy program. And San Mateo County, in five years, has reduced their energy by 11% countywide. So that's really good, but there's still a lot more that we need to do. And so we really need to look here in the city of Half Moon Bay. I mean, the high school and Cunha do have solar right now, but it probably won't be a factor for maybe another three years. So we are doing things that are going to be reducing our energy level. We did review and recommend approval of the guidelines and applications for priority development areas, Parking Policy Technical Assistant Program in PDA, which is priority development area, which has to do with transit, which we don't have. There is $320,000 available to the cities that would like to have some technical assistance in their program. And for all of you that are going to be using Highway 101, ramp metering is going to be, start implementing from Highway 92 to the San Francisco-San Mateo County line. So be aware that the ramp meters will become, becoming in effect. Attended the Transportation Authority meeting. That's where we heard a report on transit. I have a copy of the transit report, and it's really, really very interesting. If anybody would like a copy, I'd be happy to give it to them. The ridership there has increased, and there will be a new Ready Wheels contractor starting in 2015. Chuck Harvey gave an overview on the ADA Parat Transit Service, the customers, the cost funding, and the operating statistics. He also reported that we have 100 residents that use the parat transit here in Half Moon Bay and on the coast. April Chan gave an update on the TA's strategic plan, 2014 to 2019. The Authority from the Measure A funds needs to update their plans every five years. And there will be a co-side meeting in Pacifica on Tuesday, October 28th, 7 to 8, in Pacifica's Community Center Card Room. So if any of you are interested in the strategic plan as far as transportation, you should go to that meeting. You will be enlightened with the projects that we are doing. I attended my last San Francisco Airport Roundtable meeting. The Subcommittee made recommendations on four items, and they recommended that we do not allow Palo Alto to join the Airport Roundtable. They weren't going to take a vote, and then we decided we needed to take a vote because the discussion was getting really long, and nobody knew what we were going to do. So we did vote 9 to 5 not to allow them in. And the reason is that our charter indicates that only the cities from San Mateo County can be a part of this group, and they're not part of San Mateo County. So we encouraged them to try and to get a regional airport planning committee to become active down in Palo Alto and Santa Rosa area. They do not have an airport roundtable, which really surprised me. So that's why they wanted to join us. And then Bert gave an update on the San Francisco Airport construction and all the runway things that they've been doing. And he gave the oceanic arrivals over Woodside, an update on that. And then Cindy Gibbs gave an update on the optimization of airspace and procedures in Metroplex, which is going to be a big thing in the coming years. We're working closely with FAA, and we're trying to have them have more open meetings and discussions. And we approved the 2014-15 budget. Those are my meetings.
Thank you. We'll miss you on that board. Councilman Walczek?
Thank you. I just have a few things to report. I attended a meeting with Vice Mayor Frazier and staff with the Silicon Valley Foundation to discuss support for our library project. Also participated in the Hus to Harvest Dinner, which was really special because it highlighted so many local products. It's just really impressive to see the products that, you know, the crops that go into the meals, and that, really a great night, and really promoted the community. Some press were there, so I expect to see some nice articles in regional and perhaps even national publications. So that'll be really great for the community. And also want to comment on the library this weekend. So I stopped by the library this weekend. And library is such a misnomer for what our library is. It, on Saturday, it was the hub of the community. There was a family fun band who were out on the lawn singing, having fun with the toddlers, and they're dancing around and having a great time promoting literacy and giving out free books to the little ones, and a tricycle giveaway. I did not win the tricycle. And the reward for the children who went to the family fun band, free flu shots. So, which was really great. And so the Stanford Medical School had a team of, I think there was eight or 10 people there, quite, quite well-equipped, well-staffed, had physicians who also spoke Spanish, so welcoming anybody to have, get their flu shots for the season. The salsa tasting, the contributions were from local restaurants, from the librarians, from members of the community, and there were 22 varieties of salsa. And a nice lady from the community came in and made fresh tortillas for everybody as well. There was a pet adoption fair. All the computers were full. There were also books. So the library truly this weekend was a critical part of our community, and I want to emphasize that so I can illustrate that it is so much more than a repository, a place to store physical texts. It is just where everybody came together to just be part of our town. And those were my activities recently. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. At this time, City Manager, report, please.
Thank you very much. I've just got a couple of reports. I wanted to remind the community that the, that we are accepting applications for the Main Street Advisory Committee. You can go online to find the information. We asked for a statement. It's called Willing to Serve Application, and the deadline is October 24th at 5:00 p.m. So that's one. I also wanted to give you an update on the tree trimming that I hope the community has seen on Main Street. The city, in collaboration with the Beautification Committee, was able to, and the Chamber of Commerce, was able to trim 70 trees along Main Street. New LED lights will be, will grace these trees, which will result in lower energy use and cost, and a longer lifespan on the tree lights than has been in the past. Those lights will be in place and time for Night of Lights event, which will be in December. And the new tree lights were made possible through participation, again, between the City Beautification Committee and the Chamber of Commerce. So I think that hopefully everybody's had a chance to see them. We were able to, we had to amend the schedule just a bit to make sure that we were not impacting businesses. We know impacted businesses some, but I think people will be very pleased with that. I also wanted to report on street repairs, which we've heard about for some time. Council awarded, as you know, the contract back in September. Got a couple of other notes here, let me find those. And so we are working with the, let's see. So the program is to do the remaining 10 miles or so that the city is maintaining. The work will be done in October and November. And we, the contractor will be advising residents that will be directly affected, those that are most directly affected within 48 hours in advance of the work, so that they'll have the notices. Staff has also worked to send out approximately 550 general notices, general letters, to the properties that will be directly impacted. And we've sent out a press release as well. So we're coordinating. Again, we know that there will be some impact, but the long-term result will be positive for the community, and hopefully it'll be a short-time, short-term pain in order to get through that. Finally, I wanted to mention the, remind folks of the Concert in the Park. The first one will be Sunday, November 9th, at MacDutra Park from 1 to 3. It'll be a Beatles, sorry, can't remember the name, Beatles cover band. So encourage everybody to attend. Again, November 9th, 1 to 3. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. I have no cards at public forum. We will move on to consent calendar. We have a number of items there, and I believe it's, my wish is to pull item number six. And Councilman Walczek support that? Yeah, it was, and we will have it, at the end, we will go through our agenda fairly quick this evening, but we do have some very, very important issues on item 10 that we will share, and then we will bring back item six at conclusion. So at this time, at conclusion of item 10. So at this time, a motion, please, to accept items one through eight, with item six being pulled.
So moved.
Second. Moving in second. All in favor? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, so ordered, and we will now move on to item nine, I believe. Is that correct? And so we'll let staff work us through these here. I think it's just some more cleanup issues that we've been working on, and we'll get to that and come back. This, yeah, this has been already discussed in previous meeting, correct?
No, this is actually an introduction.
Oh, this, I'm sorry. Yes.
Right.
Okay, I'm with you. Thank you, staff.
So, Mayor, this is a public hearing, and it's introducing an ordinance amending our zoning code that relates to the two-year permit requirement for convalescent facilities and for daycare. Under the existing code, convalescent and daycare facilities are permitted in our residential units, in our residential zoned districts, but they must obtain a permit first. And the permit comes with a two-year limitation that can be extended if the applicant complies with the terms of the conditions of approval. This two-year permit restriction is problematic, both from a practical sense and also from a legal perspective. From a practical sense, the restriction limits the development of these type of facilities because real estate financing actually has a longer horizon and term. Usually, the term is, you know, 10 years, 20 years, or 30 years. When you have so much uncertainty with, is it going to be two years? Are you going to get your use permit revoked? It's a little bit more difficult, not impossible, but more difficult. From a legal perspective, the two-year limitation is vulnerable to legal challenge from the Federal Fair Housing Act. So in light of these considerations, staff is recommending deleting paragraph five that is attached in your ordinance and report, which limits the use permit in its entirety. Not the use permit, but the limitation on use permit in its entirety. This amendment would not eliminate the requirement for a use permit or any of the development standards that are applicable to these facilities. The Planning Commission considered this item on January 28th, and they recommend that the City Council adopt the attached amendment tonight. So we'll recommend that City Council open the public hearing, introduce the ordinance amending Title 18 of the zoning code related to the two-year permit limit for convalescent facilities and daycare facilities. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff regarding this item on the agenda? If not, I will open the public hearing, and I have no cards on this, so I will close the public hearing. And we will continue discussion. I think as Councilman Patrick had a comment quickly?
Yeah, I think it makes sense to take the two-year limitation out. So I would be happy to make the motion if other councilmen's do not have any objection. Okay, I would introduce an ordinance amending Title 18 zoning, Chapter 18.06, residential land use R1, R2, R3, to delete paragraph five, two-year permit from subsection D, convalescent facilities and daycare, general of section 18.06.025, use regulations.
Second. Moving in second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, 5-0. So now we will move on to item 10. It's been in front of us for a few months here, and we will ask for staff's presentation.
Great, thank you very much. My staff is getting the presentation prepared. As you know, we've been reviewing this for quite some time. I just want to provide some introductory comments and let you know that your staff is pretty amazing. They've been working very hard on your behalf, on behalf of this community, based on the leadership and the guidance and the directive that this council has provided to us, in saying that it was very important, that this infrastructure is very important to the community. And so staff has been working very hard. We'd like to give you an update from the last meeting and provide some information to you. The updates and the news have been coming and changing literally almost hour by hour. So this is the latest and greatest that you'll hear tonight.
Thank you. I can tell you, this morning, I had 60 children in the field, and I was on the phone.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. At the meeting of September 16th, the council authorized us to engage an engineering firm to provide an analysis of feasibility of temporary repair options for Pillar Cidos Creek Bridge. And tonight, we have Briggs, Cardoz, and Associates, who will be leading us through a presentation of several options with cost and potential permitting requirements for each of the options. As you know, we've been working very closely with a lot of different partners. We've been working with state parks. We have been working with the Coastal Conservancy, the offices of Senator Jerry Rich Gordon and Assemblyman Jerry Hill, and others, in trying to find a resolution to this. But we've also been working
Thank you. I can tell you, this morning, I had 60 children in the field, and I was on the phone.
Thank you, mayor, members of the city council. At the meeting of September 16th, the council authorized us to engage an engineering firm to provide an analysis of feasibility of temporary repair options for Pillar Cidos Creek Bridge. And tonight, we have Briggs Cardozo and Associates, who will be leading us through a presentation of several options with cost and potential permitting requirements for each of the options. As you know, we've been working very closely with a lot of different partners. We've been working with state parks. We have been working with the Coastal Conservancy, the offices of Senator Jerry Rich Gordon and Assemblyman Jerry Hill, and others, in trying to find a resolution to this. But we've also been working closely with community members. And we've, we're trying to partner and form this coalition to help find a resolution. I had the pleasure of being invited to a meeting of the Friends of the Bridge and just talk about the city's findings and how to proceed, and hear kind of their ideas about the situation. We've been in contact with a lot of the members from the public who have offered their services, such as Lynn Carthroy from Foghorn, who has advised us of a lot of environmental issues. And we've met with community members like Tim Pond, Scott Vickers, who was the engineer that presented you with plans. And we've taken all of that into consideration. Mr. John Hernandez had some good suggestions. And all of the comments were taken into consideration, and they all kind of boil down to some of the concepts that Big Scardosa will be providing tonight. So Anthony Richardson is the senior engineer from Big Scardosa, who will walk us through the presentation tonight. And I'll turn it over to you, Anthony.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Anthony Richardson. I'm a senior structural engineer with Big Scardosa Associates. I have a colleague here, John Hessler, who is an environmental consultant with David J. Powers, who's assisted on the project. So the bridge is part of the Half Moon Bay Coastal Trail and is widely used. It was closed earlier this year due to safety concerns resulting from severe corrosion. The structure was built around 20 years ago and is owned and operated by the state parks. And the state parks evaluated the structure recently and concluded it should be replaced, but it could take up to five years to perform that replacement. The City of Half Moon Bay have asked us to develop concepts of how we can restore and rehabilitate the bridge just for a short period of time until the state parks could complete that replacement project. The condition of the structure appears to be quite reasonable from above. However, underneath, a lot of the steel components have severe corrosion, and some have failed The existing structure is around 400 feet long with four equal spans. It's a prefabricated steel truss bridge. So it consists of a steel truss on each side of the bridge, which span 100 feet from substructure support to the next substructure support. Between the trusses, there are steel floor beams and stringers which support a pressure-treated timber deck. The substructure includes galvanized steel piers and tiebacks below grade, and galvanized steel posts and beams above grade that directly support the steel trusses. Most of the bridge is between 2 and 5 feet above grade, although there is a portion around 60 feet long that's over a permanent water channel. We considered three main concepts for rehabilitation. The first one is to remove the existing superstructure and leave the substructure in place, and install a temporary steel bridge. We focused on using a galvanized steel modular bridge, but other steel structures could be used. Galvanized modular bridges are often used in temporary conditions where, for example, a contractor is replacing a pedestrian bridge and has to maintain access for the public during that replacement. However, while we initially considered this as a temporary replacement, we recognize now that with little or no additional work, this replacement bridge could be considered a permanent The second option would be to repair the existing structure. This would include adding new steel components to replace the corroded floor beams and stringers, and installing temporary timber supports that are shown in orange on the slide, approximately mid-span on each of the, each of the bridge structures. There's a third option, which is a hybrid. We would remove three of the spans and replace them with a temporary trail. And the center span that's over the water channel would be repaired. I'm going to hand over to my colleague to discuss some of the environmental concerns.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm John Hessler with David Powers and Associates. I'm pleased to be able to summarize some of the environmental issues. Big picture, this is the type of project where we do not anticipate any kind of significant environmental issues. A project of this nature is exempt under CEQA, under the exemptions for repair or replacement of an existing structure. We also believe that no coastal development permit will be needed, also because there's an exemption for exactly the type of work that is being considered. In terms of permits, since the work will be occurring within Pillar Cidos Creek, that automatically means we would need a permit from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. That is a standard permit for any type of work within any creek in the state. We also know from our work here in Half Moon Bay, and from checking databases, that there are a number of endangered species that are likely to be present there. So the only issue that we're going to have to address, and we don't think it's a fatal flaw, it's just a matter of taking precautions, is putting some measures in place to make sure if there are any California red-legged frogs or San Francisco garter snakes present, that they stay out of the footprint of the construction zone. And that is something that can be done with exclusion fencing. There's other measures that can be put into place. We think that all three of these options that Anthony just described are feasible from an environmental approval perspective. However, number three, the hybrid, in terms of ranking, that would be the one that we would see is a little bit problematic, because it would entail bringing in some type of fill within the bed and banks of Pillar Cidos Creek. And that is something permitting agencies are generally not supportive of unless there are no other feasible alternatives. And in this case, the other two options are feasible. So my, we anticipate that that would be a difficult one to get approved by the agencies. But the other two, we don't see any substantial issues at all from an environmental perspective. Thank you.
May I ask you, sir? It, excuse me, tonight. It still could be appealable by individuals that would like to slow the process down. Is that correct?
What did you say? You mean the coastal, the coastal permit?
Yes.
Right. Staff, trick, befamora, but yes.
It would still be appealable. However, we are in communication with the Coastal Commission, kind of letting them know what we're doing to make sure that we get the best project that has the best chance. But yes, it is appealable.
I think what I'm reaching at is that this is something that's so valuable to the coast and so valuable to the community, I would hope that people would consider the work that's being done to move forward with this, that, and how quickly we could hopefully get this done if things move forward. I think that's really key to stress with our, all of our city residents and, yes.
Mayor, I understood you talked about the exemption for the CDP. But does it, does it help the process in case an appeal comes up if we do a CDP? Does that help safeguard the project and not slow it down?
City attorney, best for that.
Our process involving exemptions, the way it's written in the LCP, it is actually a little bit more problematic than appealing a coastal development permit. So that certainly is something that we would hope to avoid. And in working with Coastal Commission staff, what we would hope to do is present the project in a way that they concur with us ahead of time, that it doesn't raise a substantial issue of conformance with the Coastal Act or our own LCP policies, so that we can avoid the appeal if and when it happens on the basis of there being a no substantial issue finding.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, I would just add, in our experience, this type of project is exactly the type that is favored typically by the staff of either the Coastal Commission or when we're dealing with BCDC. It's all about access, and something like this, where you have the situation where access is temporarily cut off, in our experience, it is something they view quite favorably.
Thank you. We'll keep that on the record.
So on the, on the slide, we have highlighted the riparian zone, which is an environmentally sensitive area of permanent wetland. And part of the work we've done is trying to minimize the construction work and permanent disruption within that riparian zone. So I'll just go through each of the concepts in a little more detail. The first concept is replacement of the structure. So we see this, the first operation would be to remove the existing spans. A contractor could do this by installing temporary supports at perhaps 15 or 20 feet spacing, cutting the bridge into those 20, 15 or 20-foot lengths, and lifting them out of the channel with rubber tire vehicles, and removing them away from the channel to be cut up into small pieces for recycling. There would then be a 60-foot-long portion remaining over the main water channel that would have to be lifted out by a mobile crane that would have to be in the riparian zone. We'd have to do a small amount of modification to the existing substructure, which might be adding steel plates and bearing assemblies, before we could install the modular bridge. This photo shows a modular bridge being installed at a different site. These bridges are typically shipped to site in relatively small components. The main trusses are shipped in 10-foot lengths. And they're assembled on one bank, and then just pushed and progressively launched across the channel. So there's no further access required into the riparian area.
Excuse me. So when you go through these options, could you please comment on the anticipated lifespan and amount of maintenance required for each of these options?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it's the modular bridge. There are alternative structures, such as a structure similar to what we have now that could be used. It has a disadvantage that we'd have to enter the riparian area several times with cranes to install it. Once the bridge is in place, there would be some minor regrading of the trail. This, this bridge type would have a slightly higher deck, perhaps 12 inches higher. So we'd have to regrade 10 to 20 feet of trail each side of the bridge. This structure would be galvanized steel, which would, we'd expect to have a life of something like 25 years before first significant maintenance. When we look at the existing structure that's there, it's been there about 20 years. The existing substructure is galvanized and is in a good condition. There's no significant corrosion. There's minor corrosion on some of the screw threads, other than that the galvanized coating is still intact and doesn't require any maintenance at this time. In order to replace the structure, we would have to verify that the existing substructure is adequate to meet current code requirements. There have been some code changes. We've spoken to the original geotechnical engineer, and he doesn't believe that any of those code changes would be significant for this project. A modular bridge would be something like 10 to 15 percent heavier than the existing structure. And so we may have to revert to a more similar structure for that reason. This concept has some significant advantages, mainly because it is a permanent replacement structure. It has the lowest overall cost, and the lowest ongoing maintenance. There'd be no significant maintenance for 25 years or so. After construction, there will be no environmental impact and no impact for the users. They already have a permanent structure. The main disadvantage is that it has the highest initial cost, but that it is offset by the advantages.
And this one is essentially a permanent fix.
That's right.
May I ask a question on council? Do you want the questions at the end, or you take them as they come? I don't want to throw you off.
As they come is fine.
All right, great. So do you have an estimate of $1.3 million on this? Is there a safety factor in there? And is that, I guess, time of construction, I'd like to understand as well.
Okay. The, the cost of $1.3 million, that includes an estimate of construction cost with a contingency of 25 percent, which is commonly applied at this stage of design. We've also included estimated design and professional costs. That, that doesn't include any costs for permit applications, permit fees, or agency Duration, we're estimating up to six months for environmental permitting. Construction would be in the order of three to four months, something like that.
That would be significantly better than five years.
That does assume that we'd have a contractor onboard and orders placed for the materials before the environmental permitting is finalized, so that the contract could start, you know, at that point. The second option is to repair the structure. So this would include installing temporary timber supports within the riparian zone, and replacing some of the steel components that are heavily corroded. The timber supports will significantly reduce the stresses in, in the main truss elements. And that will allow us to dramatically reduce the amount of repair work and inspection that will be required. There are some elements of the truss, there are some diagonals in particular, close to the new supports, where the loads will actually increase from the original design condition. But the, the estimated loads are still well within the original capacity of those elements. There is the potential that some may have to be strengthened due to loss of strength So the first step in repairing the structure, we'd add some new steel beams. They would rest directly on the truss elements, and these would fit into gaps we'd cut in the existing decking. We'd then apply some, install some plywood on top of the decking, and some steel angles that would bear directly on the steel, the new steel beams. And they'd be screwed down to the timber decking to totally re-support the new decking. We'd have to install some vertical braces to stabilize the truss. And then we'd also install some fences that are shown in green on the slide. These would reduce the effective width of the, of the walkway, which would be important to reduce the stresses on the, on the remaining structure, but would obviously be a hindrance This, this option would have the advantage that it has the lowest immediate cost to actually restore the bridge back to use. We're estimating around $350,000. That doesn't include maintenance costs and inspection costs during the period before the permanent replacement. The main disadvantages are that the overall cost for the project would be higher, because we would still need to invest something like $1.3 million to do a permanent replacement of the structure within the next five years. The users would be impacted because of the reduced width of the structure, and also because in the future, there would be a period of months where the structure would be unusable as it's being replaced. There are also environmental issues with installing the temporary supports within the riparian zone and leaving them there for the next five years, although this doesn't seem too significant from a permitting or environmental standpoint. There's also a degree of uncertainty in this cost, because over the next five years, there will be additional corrosion and deterioration of the structure. So there will have to be annual inspections and maintenance to maintain the integrity of the structure.
So that's four to one there. Four disadvantages to one advantage.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next option is the hybrid option. This is where we would remove three of the spans in the same way we looked at Concept One. Then the remaining span would be repaired as we looked for repairs in Option Two. In order to connect the bridge back to the trail, we'd have to install a temporary trail within that riparian zone. This could be compacted fill with an asphalt surface and fences on both sides. There are other options where we could build temporary structures. This concept doesn't have any significant advantages over the other concepts.
And maybe we ought to move on.
So, to conclude, I've prepared a summary table. It shows that Concept One has the lowest overall cost, the lowest environmental impact, the lowest maintenance requirements, and the least disruption to users. It does have the highest initial cost. Concept Two provides the lowest cost but has significant disadvantages. That's the end of my presentation. If you have any other questions?
Any further questions? Councilman Alafano?
Yeah, Anthony, right?
Yes.
I didn't really hear clearly on the part about the new bridge would be galvanized, and the current bridge is, I keep hearing this term, core ten. So if you could just take a minute to talk about the 25 years and why this would last longer than the current bridge.
Right. Galvanizing is a process where the steel, after it's been fabricated into its final shape, is dipped into a bath of molten zinc. And so it has a complete coating of zinc. The zinc corrodes very slowly, and we have a demonstration of that on this site, where the substructure was galvanized and needs no maintenance at this time. The superstructure was fabricated using a material called weathering steel, which is a slightly different alloy of steel, and it's intended to be left uncoated. And it's commonly used in pedestrian bridges and other steel structures. It's, when it rusts, the rust forms, it's quite different to normal rust. It's a coating that prevents further rust, and it maintains some integrity, so that after an initial rusting, that layer of rust protects the steel from further corrosion. It's not usually recommended now for extreme environments, and that may be what we have here.
Thank you. Councilman Qualcheck?
So then, with that, could you please comment on the materials that you costed in and planned in for the Option One, the permanent option?
Yeah, so the, these modular bridges are standard components that suppliers will, you know, produce as a standard item and either rent or sell. And they're always fabricated steel with galvanized coating, hot-dip galvanized.
Thank you. Any further questions, staff, city manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I mentioned, the, this project has been ever-changing hour by hour. And so, late this afternoon, we had a conversation with State Parks, and Alex has got some details on that information that we wanted to share with you today.
Okay, so I think, Alex, as you're coming forward, if I may just comment that when we got involved in this project, the city stepped up. It's about funding. You know, who's going to pay for this? We were kind of hoping, you know, where are the monies going to come from? And, you know, we did step up and say, you know, this is important enough for all of us on the coast side, that we started the process of putting in, I believe, a couple hundred thousand dollars. Is that correct?
We did 100, and then we came back to 3.
Thank you. So we did 100 to start, and then we upped it to three. And so that has been a challenge for all of us. It's how much money can we all come up with? So I think that's very important. And so, Alex, I think we're very excited to be hearing from you. And I might say that we have three cards, but let's get staff's presentation out of the way and see how that goes, and maybe it might answer some questions quickly. So go ahead, please. Good seeing you, Alex.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, community members. My name is Alex Kajikian. I'm the deputy city manager here for the City of Half Moon Bay. Over the last seven weeks, we've been tasked as city staff, and on August 19th, you guys heard the report from State Parks, we're trying to find a solution to this intricate piece of infrastructure here for our community. Earlier this afternoon, I got a surprising call from the deputy director for Legislative Affairs over with State Parks notifying us that they've identified $1 million of funding from a deferred maintenance funding project that had lower bids than expected, so freed up about $1 million, that they're willing to put this project next on their to-do list. So, with the help of what the council's been doing, you know, the relationships that you guys have had, the relationships that the council has with their state legislators, the community support, your guys' pushing of letters and phone calls, all that helps, and staff's assistance of just really pushing through and trying to find creative solutions, has culminated with the State Parks actually identifying this $1 million. And for a state agency, a big agency like the State of California, this is pretty swift. And so we just want to thank State Park staff for identifying this, and our legislators for helping us with this. There's three items, though, that have to be accomplished before any of this funding actually appears here for the City of Half Moon Bay to, towards this project. It first has to pass a 30-day legislative review process over with the state, saying that they want to switch it from this deferred maintenance project to the Pillar Sudos Creek Bridge project. State Parks also wants to get more details about that permanent, the option one that you guys saw earlier this evening regarding the permanent replacement that was presented to you this evening. Also, we'd have to work out a formal agreement between State Parks and the City of Half Moon Bay in taking on these funds and putting the project forward. So, a lot has happened. It's changed hour to hour, but I just want to thank the public, thank the council, for really helping us as staff to do our jobs to try to get some funding and a resolution for this project. So, thank you.
Yes, city manager?
I think yes. First, we need to do this.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I know, Alex, we've had a number of conversations, and you've been under the gun, and we've been, they didn't want the mayor on conference calls any longer, and so you guys have set me straight on how to be proper in a touchy situation like this, so thank you. And I think, you know, as we've said, and then we'll let the speaker speak, that, you know, this was a commitment that the city council stepped up and made, which is huge, in my opinion, number one. And the leadership role that you as staff, which I cannot thank you enough, all of you, Alex, Dante, and Magna and Tony, have been involved in all of this along the way here, and bringing all the parties together. How do we do that with the tough situation and the continued support we get from everyone? And I think the key is also the strong commitment and continuous relationship that this council has with our elected officials in Sacramento. I mean, Rich Gordon and Jerry Hill, they contacted us today, and they wanted to keep it in the cone until this evening, when there was more definite information. And these are relationships we built when we've attended their fundraisers, when they ran for supervisors, and when they ran for whatever office, because we stood up and said, "We're behind you" as coastside leaders. And I think that's very important for all of us, that, you know, it's kind of hard to write a $100 check sometimes, but boy, thank goodness, we were all there to support each other. Now they're coming back, and Senator Hill and Assemblyman Gordon are just doing all they can to continue to support the City of Half Moon Bay and all of you residents on the coast side. So, I think we can definitely work through those three issues, staff and professionalism you all have. That's why we brought you onboard to do these things and get these things done. And I'll let the cards speak for themselves here. I don't think we have to redesign the bridge tonight. I know there's some of you that are good designers, but I don't think that's our role tonight. And I'll start with Councilman Patrick's comment, and then I'll get to our cards.
Question for you, Alex. So, the State Beaches is looking to the city to be the lead agency to get this done faster?
So, the initial input that I'm getting is that the city is nimble to get it done quicker than going through the very lengthy process that the state has. So that's the initial information that I've received earlier today.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a great concept, isn't it? That we can get things done quicker than the state? Councilman Qualcheck?
I just want to really congratulate staff, and I want to acknowledge the council, because, you know, all along, we said, the public came to our special meeting, and we had a full house, and we really have been trying to get all the parties at the table, and it's not easy. And I know there's some vacant positions with State Parks, which made it more challenging. And the council stepped up and made a financial commitment just to say, "We're in this game." And then we tripled down and went even stronger, and I'm just so pleased that all the components came together. So I want to thank staff and the public for your support in this. I think we're all pulling on the rope in the right direction in this one, so thank you for that, and thank you, council.
Councilman Alafano?
Just a quick question on the financing. So, the state's willing to put up a million. I guess we would be still putting up our 300, which I think we have to formalize. And then, was there, there was some other money, I think, that was talked about?
So, the initial feedback that we got from the Coastal Conservancy, that they were willing to put forward $200,000 for planning an environmental process. I have not been able to touch base with the Coastal Conservancy today, because this is all happening so fast, so I really have to still see how all the chips fall and how this identified pot of money will work, and how agencies want to work together with this. So, we'll have to come back, but, you know, this is, that's a huge chunk of money to push us forward. So, once I contact all the other agencies, I can give the council and the public a clear picture of what we're looking at. So, I don't want to say yes or no, or, you know.
Vice Mayor?
Well, this is just so exciting. You know, for the past few months, things changed so much from conversations in the morning, in the afternoon, in meetings, in no meetings. Thank you to staff for staying with it, and the council members for all the personal work you did to do that, and to the community, really, for backing this as well, to raise the importance of how much this was to our community. It wasn't just a little creek crossing, that it was a part of people going to their jobs, part of our recreation. It was so much important. And I think that was really, it raised that level of awareness, because this is absolutely unprecedented to collect this type of funding so quickly when this happened. So, I'm just, I'm very excited about this, and thank you for everyone for not giving up on this.
And I think you could tell, I'm definitely in favor of a permanent fix. I don't think it costs, it pays in the end. Why fiddle around and piddle here and then this and that? I think we have to do it right, in my opinion, at the moment.
So, John, based on the options presented to us, that the cost to the city is the same. Actually, it's a little less, so for the permanent option. So, it seems pretty straightforward to me.
So, the mayor, would anybody have a problem naming at the Rich and Jerry Bridge?
Let's get it, let's, yeah, let's get it done first. So I think it's fair to hear the cards. You kind of know where we're coming from. At least, we've made tremendous headway. And I know Aito Ara is here. Hera, would you like to get up and make a comment, please? And I know it's bedtime for all of us, and you guys, too, so we'll get you first here.
This might be a little bit redundant, but it's about the urgency of the bridge.
Yeah, speak into the mic so we can hear you, please.
It might be redundant, but this is about the urgency of the bridge. Today, we had an incident, and it brought us here today, crossing over Quixote. What happened when we were crossing over Quixote? On the bike path. My son almost got hit by a car crossing over. And, I'm not easily shaken, but last year, we biked to school just about every single day. And this year, you know, it's few and far between, because it is so dangerous. And he's got a lot of friends that are in the same boat, and I see them also braving those entryways. They just didn't, they don't see us.
I, I-
But thank you for bringing all your efforts. I commend you for everything you've done, and it's amazing to hear that we're finding the money to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, and then I'll let Councilman Qualcheck, but I can tell you, you know, I see you go by. I'm out there every day, early in the morning, you know that. And it is an unfortunate situation that cars are not respecting those stop signs, and cars are not respecting that path. And I will tell you, there, not you, but there are some bicyclists that aren't respecting the stop signs either, and it's a tough situation. I know it's not your family, but I'm sorry, and I'm glad everything worked out for the best here, so you are here tonight, speaking before our council. So, Councilman Qualcheck?
Yeah, I just want to, first of all, I'm thankful that you and your family are safe. And I would like to offer a comment to the mayor, and if you concur, my suggestion would be that to direct staff to look at some traffic calming options, and also inform our friends at the Sheriff's Department to monitor stop signs and add some signage, traffic calming options, and also some extra attention from the Sheriff's Department in this area, because it's, because of the broken bridge, right? That has made a change in the flow of bicycle traffic, and because of that change, it's affecting the dynamics in this neighborhood. And I think we need to step back and look at that and make sure that it is as safe as possible.
That's a very good suggestion, and we will have staff visit with Lieutenant Muncie on this issue, and also continue to see if there's a way we can ensure that wonderful young people and all people are provided to safety. That's our role in government, is to ensure safe travel for all of us. So, thank you very much, and you're more than welcome to be excused to go on home and get some rest for tomorrow again. So, at this time, I'll call for John Hernandez to speak on a card, please.
Good evening there, mayor and city council members. And, Mr. Alafano, there's one guy that would object to changing the name on that bridge.
Yeah.
Again, like I said, this is just, what a surprise. I'm just tickled with-
I think it was a surprise to the whole council, except the city manager and myself this afternoon.
The, since we're talking about the new bridge and some of the information we learned this evening from the consultants, I was wondering if they are planning to do some kind of protective coating, if we go with the permanent repair on the new bridges that are coming out to give us more life on it, if not permanent. But again, you all, thank you, and Walter, and the friends of the bridge, just staying on it all the time and keeping things moving and keeping you guys stirred up, too, and thank you for your support.
Thank you for the comments. Walter, you might not have to stop in and see me as often, but you're more than welcome to come by anytime.
I would like to continue to stop by and see you. It's a pleasure, and it's also nice to hear such wonderful news. I'm concerned, as well as pretty much everyone who's seen how the flow of traffic works on Highway One and the Naomi Patridge Trail. I'm glad we have it. I think it does serve a lot of useful purposes, but it does, this alteration in the flow has kind of caught a lot of people by surprise, and there's a lot of people using it now. And it's tricky, to watch that bike traffic, watch the oncoming cars coming at you, it's difficult for everyone involved. I would like to see some clear markings across the roads to really kind of drill it into people, at least when they cross over at once, they'll say, "Oh, yeah, there's something going on here." So, I think that'd be helpful. I think it'd also be helpful, in the interim, to have some type of detour painted on the, markings painted on the pedestrian, on the path, to show people, especially the outer towners, how to get around most effectively, because there is a way to get around some of those crossings by taking the Grand Avenue turn and going through that little neighborhood and behind Safeway. And I'd be happy to make those types of markings, if the city would allow me to do that. Just something in the interim to make it clear for people, because they get very frustrated when they encounter the detour for the first time. I would like to also take this opportunity to thank the council, and to also thank the city staff for the hard work you've done on this, and Alex, I really appreciate the determination that you guys have shown on this. And I'm very appreciative of Jerry Hill and Rich Gordon for their support. And I'm very appreciative of Jerry Hill and Rich Gordon for their support. I've, I've found them to be very open and listening to these concerns that we've expressed to them. And I, I think it's just a wonderful culmination in a, in a kind of a frustrating process. And I'm, I'm happy to see that we're, we're moving forward the way we are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I might add, yeah, go ahead.
Excuse me. I did have two questions I wanted to, to end with. One, it wasn't clear to me, I heard some mention, if the, some types of materials weren't going to be feasible because of the weight, then they had, you may have to use some other type of material, like what's used now, I guess the core ten steel?
Right. It would be the structure type would be similar to what we have now, but we'd still use regular steel and galvanized it rather than use the weathering steel.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah, just, Walter, address us in a moment.
I'm sorry.
Try to get the answers.
I'm sorry. It was just too tempting. And the second question, it does go to you. And that is the long-term maintenance on, on the bridge and who's to pay for that and what type of agreement we'll have in place as to nailing down those responsibilities? Because it kind of, it, it, it seems that maybe they weren't very clear all along to the state parks. And so, it'd be good to kind of have that at least formalized. That's all I have. Thank you.
Good. And I think staff has taken those comments and questions.
Yeah, we'll take, they take those quite seriously. And you're absolutely right. We've not worked out the details, but we will work those out as part of the agreement.
And I might comment further in conclusion here that, as I mentioned earlier, how many visitors we are getting to the coast and coming by to visit us. And this is also a classic example of them sharing the cost in our infrastructure in this community with our, our sales tax, in my opinion. And this is part of the benefit that they get to use with our continued extension of Measure J and Measure O on the ballot. And I think it's very important that they get to share in this cost that we all are bearing because they're using them. And they don't mind. I had Dutch today, I had German bicyclists today, and I've had Australian hikers come by and they just, they love the community, they love the coast side. And I tried to explain to them and they're all in agreement that they're, they're willing to share in this community to make sure that we continue to move forward in a positive direction. So, I just wanted to make that comment. So, I think, yes.
Just a quick comment. It was interesting, we went on a hike Sunday with a big group down at Cowell Ranch, which is brand new. Beautiful path on the coastal trail. And we only took a short hike and we went over two extremely long bridges over very deep gullies. I think these are virtually brand new bridges. They're maybe, I don't know, a year or two old, three years. And they're beautiful, but I looked at them and thought, oh boy, here we go again. We have, and I know this is in the county, but we have to make sure that anything that's near us, that we're alerting whoever's responsible not to let these things go and ignore them. They're, they're beautiful and new. They need to be taken care of.
Thank you. So, staff?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, before we conclude, I think the comment that the last speaker just said was the word determination. And I think that this council demonstrated that. Your guidance, your leadership, I just really want to thank you for that because you were clearly the ones that motivated the staff to continue to work. And again, your staff is a very awesome group of individuals. They were very creative, they pushed gently when needed to be pushed gently, they pushed hard when we needed to push hard. And I really want to thank them because they really were looking out for the best need for the community. And while we are behaving very professionally right now, we were doing the happy dance this afternoon, so.
Vice Mayor?
Now, staff, do you need a decision from all of us on what we're going, just officially? We have sufficient direction. I think we're, we know.
I think we're looking at the permanent fix.
I think we're looking at permanent.
The permanent fix, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
So, we will conclude this item and thank all of the residents at ESK. Again, we're doing a lot of thank yous, but it's well deserved. So, we will move on to item 11 and then we will get back to item 6.
Yes, thank you. Lost track of where we were. We wanted to bring back to you a report on the benches, the installation of benches. And I'll ask Larry to help us with that presentation.
Good evening, mayor, council. Staff is looking for the recommendation on the bench design and also so that we, the public works department can install these benches. You have before you some pictures. The fiscal impact on this is on March 29th of this year, council approved $18,000 for replacement, excuse me, $18,000 in discretionary funds to take over the maintenance and replacement of bluff trail benches. Benches cost approximately $950. Installation of benches, approximately 500 per bench. With the $1,800 in the budget, the staff will install 12 of these benches this fiscal year. There are a total of 28 bluff top benches in a mile stretch between, that the city owns and maintains between Kelly Avenue and the Seymour Bridge. Originally, the people who sponsored the bench for their loved one paid for the bench and paid for installation. Public Works staff inspects these benches twice a year. They will inspect, be inspected again just prior to evaluating which of these 12 benches we're going to replace. As part of this project, Public Works applied for a CDP and was granted the CDP. The proposal for these new benches will be made out of recycled plastic, which will be last longer in the marine environment in which they reside in. And being made out of plastic, I expect them to live longer than eight to 10 years that the current benches survived. If there's any questions, I'm here to answer any, any questions you have.
Questions?
Larry, and the picture of the old bench, the metal supports look in bad shape. Do you do something different with the new ones so the metal part will last longer?
The new ones don't have any metal in them, other than the bolts holding the, the support and the, and the boards are made out of recycled plastic. There are metal bolts that hold the two pieces of plastic together. They will last approximately 13 to 15 years and even then, then the metal bolt can be replaced because the plastic will still be, maintain its original shape, original condition.
So, question through the chair. So, Larry, when, we have 28 benches right now and we're going to replace 12.
Correct.
So, are we going to try and replace 12 every year till we replace them all?
Depending on budget, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I know pending money and things, but I'm.
That is my goal, is to replace them prior to them failing.
Yeah. Because, as you said, all these benches are in memory of loved ones, so it would be nice if they were replaced and then as new ones come on, that they purchase the recycled ones.
One thing that I really want to stress is it's going to take a little longer to order these things simply because the memorial plaques that are on the current benches, I want to make sure that that is transferred, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to go through a vendor, but I'm going to make sure that each of the, word for word on the memorial plaques are transferred to the new benches.
Oh, thank you very much for that.
And through the chair, I know several years ago that there were bronze plaques that were on there and there was a rash of theft of those. So, the new identification markers will be less valuable to thieves?
The, the wording are now engraved into the boards.
Okay.
And it is painted a different color so that it stands out. It's very legible.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilman Qualcheck?
Thank you. So, I think it's very smart and wise and I appreciate that we're respecting the families that made the original donations and carrying forward the, the memberance, remembrance that is included on the benches. And when it comes time, I know you'll do this, but just when it, when it comes time to place the order and put them together, I would like to suggest that we make sure we use a fastener that is, the worst thing I want to see is that we, we save $5 on, on fasteners. And I know you're not going to do that, Larry, because I know how you are, but I don't want to save five bucks on fasteners and have them corrode. And let's just, let's go, you know, top shelf fasteners on this one.
They will be stainless steel.
Thank you. Perfect. Thanks.
So, we would need a motion on this to continue to move forward. And I think the other one is, I've been asked regarding, how do we get on the list to get a bench built in the memory of a loved one or a family member? So, we got to work on that with staff and the galaxy. You talked to me about that already. And so, something we want to have the public understand how it, it just doesn't happen. We can't just throw benches all over the coast. But we do want to have them, that they will last. So, thank you. So.
Just for your information, that at present, there is approximately a bench every 160 feet. So, it's kind of hard to add more benches to that. We still need a path there and not a row of benches for a mile, so.
Or you could put some close together to kind of have them in a grouping. You could take a look at that.
Or add more trails.
We can. Again, it's at your pleasure.
Very good.
I'd like to make a motion. I also want to thank Larry. So, I was riding my bike on the coastal trail and if you look in the staff report, that would be my bike in the photo. I sent this photo to Larry and I go, oh my God, look what I saw. And he goes, I'm all over it. I know about it. We're on it. And he took care of it like that day. So, thank you for being so on top of it. And with that, I move to approve the bench design and bench installation on the coastal trail.
Second?
Moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so order 5-0. And we will move back to our last item this evening, item 6. And staff's presentation. I guess Dante, you're still here and.
Thank you, thank you for pulling this off consent. While it's a routine contract, I appreciate you, the council pulling this so we can provide a little background in terms of the work that's been done in order to get to this point.
Mayor and members of the city council, this is an item to approve a contract with Calendar and Associates for the Quahog Ditch feasibility study. And the council approved a small amount of money in their last budget, which was effective July 1st, for us to do studies and come up with a plan that can be considered for future years' funding. And so, this is the process to do that plan. There have been several attempts over the years to address the erosion and flood control issues at Quahog Ditch. And also, address the bank stabilization and other issues. And there was actually a recommendation that was, was moved forward in 2008. But that proposal was tabled after there were a number of concerns about the design and environmental concerns from the community. Since that time, since 2008, there have been a couple of things that have happened that really changed the dynamic and how we view resolution here in the Quahog Ditch. First, as you know, the routine drainage maintenance was performed by the city, which resulted in a settlement against the city that we had to pay for, for that maintenance. And also, that area in Quahog Ditch was designated and mapped as environmentally sensitive habitat. And this adds an additional layer of complexity for the, for the area. So, the recommended approach is to put together a consultant team that includes members that specialize in environmental design, engineering, biological and environmental support, and also community facilitation. We've had some discussions with some of the neighbors on Quahog about this approach. We have also talked with the sanitation, the sewer district about this approach because they own a parcel that is adjacent to the Quahog Ditch also. And we believe that we'll be able through this process to explore some concepts that will have some level of habitat enhancement, but also, you know, one, bank stabilization, erosion control. And whether that's enlarging the channel, whether that's some other engineering solution, we want to explore that and be able to kind of vet it with the community and bring to council some feasible options to resolve the issue. So, staff believes that this integration of disciplines would help in bringing along a resolution to the problem. And so, that is the basis for our request tonight. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We have a number of cards, otherwise we could hear the cards. First, Harvey Robach, please.
Good evening, mayor, council. Harvey Robach, 464 Pine Avenue. I'm delighted to see that there's some movement on this issue that has bedeviled the community of Casa Del Mar for years now. So, that's a step forward. I'm a little concerned when I read the staff report that Dante just said, the city's public works department completed a debris removal project which resulted in a lawsuit. It sounds like some accidental sort of thing. The reality is that the city was found by a judge to have deliberately and intentionally violated the coastal act. And that's why the lawsuit was successful. And I have to report that the settlement was, has not been completed yet. The, the city has not completed the requirement to get a retroactive CDP through the coastal commission. So, I just want to make you aware of that. I'm glad that we're going forward. There are two concerns I have about this contract. Step number nine is the first place where the public is involved in the resolution of this issue. And I think that's way late in the process. By that time, there could have been deals behind closed doors that don't allow the public input. So, I would urge you to change the order so that the public is involved early in the process. And I would also urge that regulatory agencies be involved from the beginning so we don't get another repeat of this process that would, has cost the city $400,000 already. So, please consider having the public involved, the regulatory agencies involved from the get-go. Thank you.
Thank you. James Benjamin, please.
Good evening, council members, staff. James Benjamin, I live at 400 Pelicitos Avenue here in town. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you on this subject. I think that, first of all, I appreciate and I, as I have stated in writing in a letter to Dante and spoken verbally, how much I appreciate the fact that we're moving forward on a study to identify some great alternatives. Larry, 316 steel, that's what you want to use, not just any stainless. And I just wanted to be very clear about one aspect of the project, as I read the staff report, that maybe you can clarify. And that was the comment with respect to the identified alternative being within budget. Maybe I missed it, but the staff report actually doesn't state a budget. And so, my concern is that if we're trying to shoot for a target that's within budget, but we don't actually know what the budget is, the impetus is sort of, let's find the thing that's the least expensive. And as I'm sure you know, in, in public projects, we want to manage cost, risk and benefits. And in this particular case, in addition to the attempt to abate the erosion and reduce the flood risk and resolve the habitat environment, satisfy the regulatory officials, we could also, if we do those things, probably get some really good grant money. You know, when I heard about the bike trail, when I heard about the Highway One Bridge, you know, we did a great job of pursuing grants. But I, to my knowledge, we haven't done that at all here. If we just put it in a pipe, we're probably not going to get any grants. If we just put in a pipe, we're probably not going to get any grants. But I think that if we do the right kind of project, we can really have an enlightened view that's going to make the net cost to the city really reasonable. And if the budget not only considers the initial construction cost, but in some alternatives, there are going to be high maintenance costs that tend to require, you know, removal of facilitation, or, you know, doing more bank reinforcement, as opposed to some designs that, according to modern research, show that the projects are largely self-managing and require minimal, really just monitoring costs mostly. We could actually come up with a net present value for the project that's lower, even if our initial outlines, as we saw in the bridge case, are a little higher, and if the idea is a little more expansive than the absolute minimalist approach. We'll get a lot of benefits to the city if we do that. And I thank you for the chance to make these comments.
Thank you, Paulette, please. And our last card will be Patrick Johnson.
All right, good evening. Yeah, I'm just listening to some of these comments made by Harvey and Jimmy, and I'm hoping that you're really listening, because I think that there's some good comments that you just heard. I thank Dante Hall enormously for moving this project forward. I think you're doing a great job. I'm thrilled that you're here with Half Moon Bay, because I think frankly, you are the hardest worker, maybe Alex, but you know, it's good to see that when we hire people, they actually work and do a good job. One of the things that I just wanted to bring out though, was that at one point, Jimmy Benjamin put forward this person, Ann Riley. I don't know if you've done anything about that, but I decided, let me look up who she is, because this is somebody apparently that is willing to offer some free services to us. And she is the Watershed and Stream Protection Restoration Advisor for the San Francisco Regional Water Quality Control Board. Previously, she was Executive Director of the Waterways Restoration Institute, where she worked on the design and installation of stream restoration projects. She's also been involved in the evaluation of national water policy for the National Research Council, the Institute of Water Resources and Federal Task Forces. She's a nationally known hydrologist, stream restoration professional, and founder and Executive Director of the Waterways Restoration Institute in Berkeley, California. Goes on and on, she's a PhD, she's, she won the Restorationist of the Year Award in 2004. I mean, she's got an impressive background. And for somebody like that to be willing at all to, you know, come and help us with this situation, I think we should be taking serious advantage of that, because this is obviously somebody who knows a lot about the flow of water. And that's what is necessary here in our predicament that we find ourselves in with the Kehoe Ditch. So I'd like to see us taking advantage of that situation. Otherwise, yes, I agree with Harvey, I'm concerned about step number nine, that it's so far down in the process, when you start including the community, so that so much has already been done. That's a little scary to me as well, before we're brought into the process. And cost is such an important part of things, and how to get money to fund things, so that to come up with the plan, and then to have it costed out, I think is a little, is a little bit late in the process. I think any plan needs to come with cost information with it, okay? All right, that's it, thank you.
Patrick, please. That concludes our speakers.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members and staff, thank you for listening tonight. Patrick Johnson, speaking as a resident, not as a planning commissioner tonight. This has gone back 16 years. Marina, I remember when we first talked about this when you were on council the first time, and eyes rolled back when we got our first proposal, what it was going to cost, and the fellow council members that were on, and the mayor at the time, it got postponed. This goes back 16 years ago, Marina, I think you remember that, when that was going on. I've been part of this for 16 or more years. Jimmy's been on it for eight, when he was on planning commission. It had been a problem then, I didn't know Jimmy that well back then, but it was something that we were always trying to get forward and trying to get resolution. And of course, Franca was here, you remember her, she's living now on the other side because of health issues, but we have Randy and Linda that are the new neighbors. The same old problem is there, we need to get it resolved. We have been fighting tooth and nail, I'm pretty tired now, so I'm just going to lay back, sit in the back here, but I'm still fighting. We need to do this, we need to go forward, and we need to do it in the right way. I remember when Paul Nagangas was at Amy Yates, she's no longer living here, she's passed on, but her problem is still there. Her foundation's cracking, her cement's cracking, things are rolling down into the ditch, if you would. It's still there, I could bring you to those homes, you've heard all these stories. Why I'm bringing it up again is because we have new staff that haven't heard this story, and we have new people on board that have not. So I want to bring that story back into life, because it's still the same problem 16 years later. What we need to do is keep in mind, the sewer plant was in approval, and Mr. Alafano, I think you were there, Mr. Qualcheck, you were there, January of the first, they were like, "We would love to help you guys, because we kind of own that ditch." And they wanted to call it something else, and I said, "We can call it whatever you guys want, as long as we get everybody on board." And that's kind of what I'm hearing back here again, let's make sure that if it's an alternative channel, or what we want to do, let's work with the sewer plant, because they need to be part of this. They are on the other side. The other thing we need to do is make sure that we do the CDP and do it correctly and follow the rules, because now it's been labeled something different than it was 16 years ago. It was a ditch before, now it's something else, it's a habitat. It is on the maps as that, and we have to treat it that way. So we have to make sure the CDP is done correctly, the Coastal Commission is moving forward like we've done with the bridge, and we make sure that there's no roadblocks, and make sure that that road is clear, and we can move forward. And we have to make sure that the Kehoe residents are on board and they're in approval with this, because now what they moved in, what I did 16, 17 years ago, and what it's classified now, is totally different. Not only that, the public needs to know what's going on, and just in general transparency. That word's been coming around, we need to bring it back. That's what needs to happen. I really hope that we can get this moving and get something on the books and complete it.
Thank you. Staff, would you like to make brief comment, response here?
Sure.
I think...
One of the questions was about the public involvement, and why is the public being involved so late? It's not our impression that they're being involved late. The items that are before we go to the public are things that we need to do. We don't want to go to the public with a blank page and say, "What do you guys want to do?" So we need to do things like site recon, we need to do document review, we have some historical documents, and the consultant needs time to ramp up. So those are the types of things that they're doing. They are going to prepare some alternatives based on the three items identified in the staff report, and we'll have the public, the neighborhood, kind of react to that, let us know what we missed, and then we'll make adjustments and have meetings from there. We are working with the Coastal Commission. As a matter of fact, I think a member of the public notified the Coastal Commission that this process was kind of going on. We got a call from Coastal Commission, who was saying, "Hey, what's going on? We'd like to be involved." We said, "Absolutely. Once we get to the point where we have something to show you, we'll involve you." So we are kind of greasing the skids and making the way a little bit easier for us on the back end. The recommendation for other experts, Ann Riley and others, sure, absolutely, we will talk to them. But tonight was about authorizing the money to get this consulting team on board, we'll include them in the recommendations. And the other was working with CCC, early in the process, and Sewer Authority. Our conversation with the Sewer Authority was, "Great, when you guys get a plan, you're welcome to come to our board meeting and give us a presentation early on." And we plan to do that, once we have something that's vetted with the community, and we have a pathway to get something that's feasible done in the community.
Thank you. Councilman Qualcheck?
So Dante, if you have not been to a SAM meeting, you are in for a treat, this is going to be great. So Alan and I, of course, sit on that board. So a quick question, I guess to council and to staff, and actually our city attorney, would it be appropriate, and would the council be interested, for one or two members of the community, perhaps people who live along the ditch, to be included in the site recon, to walk the path, so that when we get to the, later in the process, we get to the, I guess nothing prevents anybody from doing that right now, but perhaps if we all, if there's a representation of the neighborhood, that when we get to our input meetings, we've all sort of seen the same things.
I think that's probably a good suggestion to have some neighborhood outreach, when our consultant is looking at the site and trying to gauge what the issues are, we certainly would want to include input from the neighborhood in that. And, you know, including members or a representative of the neighborhood with the site inspection, I think is a great suggestion.
Also, city attorney, please, there was a comment made about we're not following the judgment of the judge, what's the status on that comment?
Well, we are following the terms of the settlement agreement, which required the city to process a retroactive coastal development permit for the work that was done in February of 2009. You recall that the city council did approve a retroactive coastal development permit over a year ago, I believe. That permit has not been implemented, however, because it's on appeal to the Coastal Commission right now, and the Coastal Commission's reviewing it.
Thank you. Any other questions, city council?
No, I really am thankful we finally have this to the point where it is. I went and met with the neighbors a couple of times, I think it was frustrating, because there was really nothing on the table at that point, and we kept saying, "When the time's right, you know, we'll put the money in the budget." This isn't small change, this is significant dollars, and this addresses the concern the neighbors had, that the previous study was kind of an engineering study without the environmental part. So this time, obviously, we're going to be doing both of them. And I have to agree with the staff, I think it may be great to have, you know, the neighbors involved with the site visit, but I think as Dante said, I'm the kind of person, when you want to sit down and talk to me about directions, I need to see some things, what kind of alternatives, oh, the banks could go this way or that way, and nothing's set in stone. I think that's the point where the neighbors begin to voice their opinion. So I don't think there's anything wrong with the sequence of events, and I think we're making it very clear that we want the neighbors involved. We want this project to be completed. We don't want this thing to get stopped somewhere, spent all this money and not completed. So from my perspective, we're going to get this thing taken care of. It may take us a little while, but we're going to do it.
Thank you. Any further comments? Otherwise, we could thank you, staff, and in the public, we're at least moving this forward, a new beginning, let's just say. So yes, I would entertain a motion.
I would move the authorized staff to contract with Calendar Associates Landscape Architecture in the amount not to exceed $45,000 for a feasibility study to develop conceptual design alternatives and provide community facilitation services, to identify a preferred project alternative to address potential erosion and flooding impacts in the vicinity of the Kehoe Ditch.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Just note that we'd like to invite a representation of the neighborhood to be included in the site recon.
Very good. No further comments? If not, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, so order, and this concludes for tonight.